Come to order, stamp the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody read the minutes, the last ones' minutes?
Add the special meeting minutes too.
Alright, as well as the special meeting minutes, have we read all those?
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah. Do we approve the minutes?
Yeah.
Call for a motion.
Call for a motion, anybody?
Make a motion to accept the special meeting and the last minute town council.
I'll second that.
Awesome, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes.
That's all here.
I know.
Two, that's all we need.
That's core, um, new business. Uh, property beside the South Bald Diamond. Who is going to discuss that?
That's, I think.
That's me right there.
Okay.
Yeah, well, uh, my father, you know, he was, he inherited it from my grandparents. They had a house there that burnt down years and years ago. And, uh, there's ten acres back there. And there's a fifty foot easement that I actually technically pay taxes on that fifty foot easement and the property that's there, which is fine. But the easement Fountain City has gave to the property owners on each side of that easement. So now they, they own it. And it's a fifty foot easement, I need access to that property because it's landlocked. And I know legally you can't landlock, I own property around and you can't legally landlock property. So now I gotta get that easement put back in because I got a guy that's offering me forty thousand dollars for this piece of property for ten acres. When I'm selling property in Richmond at, I'm getting a hundred thousand dollars for three acres. So you're taking a ten acre field and making it into a forty thousand dollar property. So now I gotta get that easement opened back up. My dad, he come up here and talked to you guys quite a few times, like three or four times. But he had aged orange, he's a Vietnam vet, he got aged orange. He couldn't, he wasn't healthy enough to, to prolong, he just got, he's just like, I'm done, you know? He was just sick.
He passed away before you guys could get it figured out.
Yeah, and then you guys gave that property what?
Yeah, I don't think you guys were aware of that.
How long ago has that been?
Three years ago.
Really?
Yeah.
That soon huh?
Yeah.
What, what property is this on?
It's up there, it's, it's on a, uh, I guess it'd be a south end of town. And you know how you come off Waterfall Road or Whitewater Road? And you go down that field, there's a bridge there. But that bridge is not safe, I guess.
Oh, okay, so you're talking about that goes back where there was a couple houses?
Yeah, there was a couple houses back there. And, uh, it butts into, I can't remember who put in that subdivision, uh. Was it Sprouts?
Century Drive.
Century Drive.
That's what it is, yeah.
That was, that was before all that Sprouts issue was before me, so that's why I don't remember anything about it.
Well, that cul-de-sac right there at the end of it, there's a fifty foot easement that goes back into that. And, uh, I worked construction personally, I used to build houses, I'm not building houses back there. But, uh, I'm fifty years old, I don't, I'm not building houses. You know?
Yeah, he just retired.
Yeah, and, uh, but I'd like to get that access opened back up. But I, I don't wanna do anything wrong to the people that live there, you know? Whatever, whoever I sell to, I wanna make sure they make it a, I don't want it to look crappy, I guess.
They'll probably end up building houses eventually on it, once he does sell it, assuming.
This is my wife, yeah.
Sorry. That's just the, the, the field that goes between the Bald Diamond and that lane that goes back?
The lane goes back, but it's on, on the other side of the creek. There's a river that runs through there, it's on the backside of that.
I've been back there forever.
I haven't either.
I've never been back there.
Well, the only time I went back there was when they had, when, um, shoot, what was their name? I coached their boys in baseball. Her name was Claudia.
Oh, yeah, Claudia, yeah.
And they had a house fire back there and the fire trucks couldn't get there because that bridge was.
Yeah, it wasn't holding, that's why we can't use the bridge.
That's the last time I've been back there.
Yeah, and, uh, I mean, I'll drive a car over that bridge. My dad built that, when he got, first I got out of Vietnam, they built that bridge. My dad was like, I don't know how to build a bridge, and my grandpa was like, we're building a bridge, you know?
Cause the fields on each side of that, I think, is Martin's, don't they own?
Yeah, I think they do, yeah.
Cause I know the rec association tried to buy that land over and over and over and over and he wouldn't let go of it.
But it's been my family for longer than I've been alive. But it's too important now to where it's like, if I ain't gonna do anything with it, we might as well get rid of it, but I gotta get that easement opened back up. And whoever I sell to has to be able to put in a proper, you know?
The attorney wasn't able to be here because of that storm that's coming through. She'd be having to drive to Muncie when the red is gonna be right over us, so. Um, I wrote it down and I'm pretty sure that I have seen paperwork in the office about that easement concerning Sprouts.
It shows it on there.
Yeah, so I'll get with her and have her look into it and see, cause I, I don't know nothing about what they did or who owns water.
Well, see, that last house with easements goes over part of that driveway.
I know they had to fight with Sprouts about something that had back there, yeah.
He lived there for several years until my dad basically gave up the fight.
Yeah.
You know, because he was sick.
He got too sick, he couldn't.
Yeah.
He couldn't even get out of bed.
Claudia was the clerk when all that was going on.
Claudia was, uh, that's who bought the house that burnt down.
No, Claudia Steckey, the clerk before me, she was the clerk when all that.
I thought you was talking about Claudia.
Two different, two different Claudia's.
Two different Claudia's, okay.
I can't remember the Claudia that I know, I can't remember her, I think.
I can't either, but she's really nice.
No, we appreciate it, like, like he said, we don't wanna use it, we just want somebody that can use it. And if we're not gonna use it, we'd like to, but without, with having that landlocked, he can't even, he can't even get a proper price on it, you know, so.
We've had an offer already on the property. But, you know, for that price, I'm, I'm willing to hang on to it, you know, until we try to figure something out. But, and I guess somebody, I was gonna, gonna say, I'd drive, I'd buy the property where the railroad tracks used to be to get back to that property, but somebody already bought it. So I can't, I can't, I can't tell somebody, give up half your yard because, you know, I need access.
Give me your phone number, sir, so that way when I find out something, I know how to contact you.
Seven six five nine six zero six five two nine. My name's Jason Fines. How many you wanna give her?
Yeah, just in case, cause sometimes he gets a lot of business calls, uh, seven six five nine one four four eight one four, and whoever calls, well, he'll, he'll call them right back. But we really appreciate it.
I mean, just, I ain't trying to waste your guys' time on stuff like this, you know what I mean?
The situation and what needs to be done.
Well, they, well, I know it was in Fountain City's name or in your community. Well, now it's switched over to Richmond's. I don't know what happened there, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's what they told us when we came to the jury, yeah.
Yeah, it's before my time.
Before my time.
Well, dang it, guys, well, before my time, they ain't helping me.
Yeah, before everybody's time up here, so.
But maybe whoever tells, you know, might remember something that's not here.
Yeah, what we need to do, how we need to proceed, you know, whatever steps.
Yeah, just whatever steps, I mean, Terry.
Sure, no problem.
It's drawled up though.
Okay.
Alright.
We'll find something out for you.
So, uh, do we need to stay here for?
No, you don't.
No?
We really thank you guys, we're sorry.
You're more than welcome to stay unless you hear the rest of it.
No, but thank you.
Uh-huh, have a good night.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time, thank you very much.
You guys do have a nice little town.
I've listened to this.
Yeah.
I was looking at the property online, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye.
Alright, we're with the Roy Locas, so now we're going for the visitors forum.
That was something Shane and I put on there, so we might have to, uh, skip that and put it on next week's. Agenda, next month's, next week's. Next month's agenda, so he can say what he wanted to say about that, cause I'm not real sure.
About this?
The visitors forum, yeah, what he wanted to talk about.
Oh, okay, so we can skip that for now?
Yep, yep, I'll put it on the next.
Okay, alright, alright, that's fine, that's fine. Right, revised certification operators.
And I think I sent everybody a copy, I have it printed here, if I didn't. But it's just their revised contract with not having to do the wastewater part of it.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I was pretty sure, I, well, actually, I know I emailed it to everybody, cause I had to go to that email and print it off, cause I forgot to print it off the first time.
I've got it at home somewhere.
So we just need a motion to accept that new contract.
Can we get a motion to accept this contract?
I'll make a motion to accept a new operator contract for the water.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
For wastewater?
Yeah.
Oh, is it water?
Oh.
Do it now?
No, we're paying them for the water service, not the wastewater.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Alright, planning committee chairperson.
That is for the, the thing that we did at the special meeting, the stellar pathways.
Sure.
We have to nominate a chairperson for the planning committee and she is sitting right back there in the, in the back row. So I just need one of either Lori or Michael to nominate Terry and the second to.
Hold on, we need Terry.
Second.
All in favor?
Congratulations.
You're it, you're the big winner.
Haven't heard anything from him yet, but we will. Okay, then, do we have an update on the paving project?
And that without Shane here, I don't think we can.
Okay.
We're gonna have to put that on next agenda also.
Alright.
I have some figures, but without him here to talk about it.
Alright.
On what they're planning, what they are doing.
Yeah, he's the one that met with Lou, so nobody really knows anything but him.
Okay, department reports.
Who wants to start out?
You wanna read those, Michael, since Shane's not here?
No, Lori does. Uh, police department, we'll start with that. Uh, see, attached monthly reports, he drew five cases. Three active that he has going on, total of fifteen, um, continuing, working on cases. Uh, it looks like they completed one hour defensive tactics, um, seven hours of force home fours. Um, he completed his phaser instructor research. And then he's working on getting it scheduled for the eight hours of phaser training. Looks like they did canine training and then, um, planning all day training for the department. And it'll basically cover the ethics, traffic stops, report writing, stop sticks, stuff like, uh, uh, all vehicles up and running. Uh, the explorer received a storage unit for the back, and I think he got that from the fire department inning. So that helped them out. Looks like he said he'll be receiving a grant from the Wayne County Commissioner. Representatives will be there next month for the board meeting.
Signing, they're gonna sign, there's an agreement, basically it says they're gonna give us money. Um, you guys are gonna agree to accept it and then I have to report back to them what it's spent on, which there's already a list that they already got, what it's all gonna be spent on, which that's something I'll take care of. And that's just part of the.
Process.
Process, that's all that is, so they're gonna present this thing saying, you guys are gonna accept this and then report back to us when you spend the money, basically.
Seems like, go ahead.
In like, just the simplest terms, so.
Looks like he has two applicants out for the reserves. Uh, fireworks this year will be the thirteenth. If there's an issue, the event will be on the twelfth.
Why? Why is it gonna be a week late?
Um, he's got so many other events, he's got Richmond and other, uh, other venues that he's gonna be doing. And that's, that's when he could get our schedule. And he says the thirteenth is the scheduled date, unless there's some issues at some other venues, then he'll have to move to the twelfth. That's the way he explained it to me.
Sound good, uh, street department, looks like they.
Hold on a second, um, Kerry will be on vacation from June fifteenth to the twenty second. You don't have that.
It's, it's another letter.
It was in a letter form, but there's other stuff in there that, so. To the twenty second.
Street department, pressure washed outside of the bathrooms, uh, pressure washed the concrete in front of the bathrooms, cleaned out the utility room at the park, cleaned up her bike Kaufman building on Vine. Uh, for the, yeah. It says, it says the sewer department with weed eating in spring around lagoons. Set up an appointment with I D M to review my test. And it said they'll be going on Friday, the tenth, um, quote for tree removal at three ten Walnut Street.
The new owners that bought Eric's old house.
Yeah.
There's two trees in this, in the right of way, and one of them is like, um, almost completely hollow.
Right.
So it, and of course, since it's in the right of way, it's on us.
It just says stump grinding with tree removal, four hundred and eighty dollars.
And then the other one that they want down, one that she said she wanted down, it's in the street right of way, but there's nothing wrong with the tree. So I told her when it comes to that, that's on the homeowner if they wanna take him down, because we only take them down if there's a problem. So, but with that one, it is, and Tree Amigos confirmed that it is rotten and hollowed out and will probably fall before long, so. And I know it's up in some wires too, so. So, yeah, you need to make a motion for the tree. Zoom you two? Or, sorry Cecil.
Yeah, can we get a motion? Uh, whether we wanna get.
That tree removed the tree or not?
I'll make a motion to remove the tree and the stump training at three ten North Walnut Street.
Second?
I guess I second, I'm over here.
All in favor?
I'll let Lori do the sewer and water.
Oh. Okay, the sewer report for twenty twenty four discharged Monday, April eighth through Friday, the twelfth. Total gallons discharged for April.
Stuck, you never go back with me.
Does what?
I'll have to put down next month's report.
I have to, it didn't, okay. Two oh six north.
Did you ask Walker?
Hmm?
Did you ask Walker?
No, does he?
I'm just asking.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we don't know how many gallons was discharged for April. Um, two oh six North Front Street, septic inspection, resident had water coming up out of the ground while running upstairs water. She has two lines going to septic, no clean out on second line, gave Jason Allen contact info. Four four twenty four, organized our job board for all three departments with upcoming project. Located septic for toxic design. Cleaned out the big drain at the end of the driveway at the shop weekly. Made uniform rack and shop bathroom to keep uniforms on. Weed eaters most of the banks at the lagoons, weed eater down at lagoons to help control banks.
Weed killer.
Clean and organize shop, equipment garage and lagoon shed. Pressure washed North Lift Station, mode lagoons weekly. Inspected, inspected septics with root issues, still no roots found, waiting for backhoe to complete tasks. Replace damage, septic lift on Century Drive. Test review with item on Friday, May the tenth at ten AM in the N D, in N D. Just notes for any downtime, study for exams. Things needed is, uh, vote on departments as far as who's gonna oversee which department. Uh, wife will be induced on Monday, May the twentieth, vacation starts Tuesday, the twenty first. Needs to be counsel through that I can take my vacation Tuesday through Friday and still work my schedule weekend of May the twenty fifth and twenty sixth. Anything we need to discuss on that?
As far as on the, so you're talking about over, cause technically, both of you are over the water and sewer with, or I'm sorry, over the water, you, both of you are supposed to be water, learning the water side of things, um, because Mike and Dougie, Mike and Doug are still our certified operators on that side of it, so what you're referencing to is the sewer department. Walker is the one that has the certificate on that side of it, so he is the one that has to sign off on all the paperwork, correct?
Correct, but everything else I can run. So that's the conflict we've been running into, pretty much on daily issues now, is there is no communication between that thing, so it's like, what he's doing, I don't know. And, I don't know, it's just issues that need solved, so if we're just appointed over one certain department, we worry about that one. Help out with others when needed.
So when you guys were hired, we, we all agreed that nobody would technically be over a department until a one-year review.
Correct.
But not a title, so.
Yeah, they would not technically have a title until at that point.
Right, so nobody would, yeah, nobody should be telling anybody what to do.
They should be, they should be working together at all times and learning the same.
Working together don't happen, so.
Yeah, I think that's the problem, they're not, they're not working together.
So, but you have one that does have a certification, one doesn't, one signs off on the paperwork, so. At the end of the day, the one that signs his name is the one that's responsible.
As far as items concerned, yes. If something's wrong, then whoseever names on that paperwork is the one that's gonna get in trouble.
Does that give them authority to tell someone else what to do?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
I'm just asking, okay.
I'm just saying that his name is the one that's on the line for the wastewater stuff, cause he's the one with the certification. That's all I'm saying.
So I'd say whenever you're out there doing anything at the lagoons, on that side of it, both of you should be out there at all times, no matter what it is. I mean, that's my opinion on it, cause both of you should be learning, same thing with the water, as far as on that side of it. When the wells were being redone, as far as on that side of it, computer readings, locates, all that stuff. You guys were hired for the same job on that side, never mind.
But I'm not gonna sit back there and be cursed out at trying to accomplish.
That, you guys are getting into the stuff that'll be on the executive session.
Yep.
That's not something to get into right, right now.
Yeah, we can discuss it at that point, huh?
We'll have to discuss those.
But at this time, as far as, I would say that, um, both of you need to work together as far as what's going on to make sure that everything's getting filled out correctly on that side of it at all times, cause he's the one that will be signing off on it. So if something isn't right, then needs to be talked about on that side of it, so. But as far as department heads, I thought we was under, I mean, I printed off the email on the minutes that stated that nobody would actually have a job title until one year, at that point, there will be a review. So to say for, for any of these council members to say that you're over sewer is incorrect. For any of them to say that Walker's over water is incorrect, because the board had already voted and once the board votes and approves it to be it that way, that's the way it is. One person does not have the power to override any of us. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
So.
But I, I need to still make sure I'm clear to work. Yes, we need to.
Well, that's something, the days he's on vacation, Monday through Friday.
Tuesday. I'll work that Monday.
Oh, you're working the Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Tuesday through Friday. So right now him and Walker alternate weekends. The weekend before he goes on vacation is Walker's weekend. The weekend after his vacation is David's weekend. But there is a, a conflict on whether David should be able to do that weekend since he's on vacation before, but the weeks actually start on Friday. So Friday through Thursday is a week, as far as the timeframes. So he would be on vacation that Friday, but he'd be at work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
No, because he's taking his vacation.
No.
That next week, aren't you?
No. Walker's weekend is the weekend before he takes his vacation.
So you're just taking off five days?
Four, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I, I might possibly take off the week after, I said, it just, it just depends if.
Then that would.
My help at home.
Then, that, then that week, that, those days in between would be considered vacation time also. If you take a week, if you take two weeks vacation at a factory, you're gone from Monday to two weeks on a Sunday. You don't, if they have overtime on Saturday and Sunday, you can't go work the Saturday and Sunday, you're on vacation.
On that side of it.
Right.
And if you can't work during the week, then that would, as far as.
I'm just from va- factories I've worked at.
Yeah.
If you're on vacation and it's Monday to Sunday, if they have voluntary overtime on Saturday and Sunday, you can't go work that overtime because you're on vacation.
Unless it's building.
Building's special. But that's the factories I've worked at, you guys that's worked in factories can tell me if I'm wrong or not, but if you're on vacation for two weeks and that's weekend in between, there's overtime to sign up for. Could you go in and work overtime even though you're on vacation?
Yes, yeah.
That's on you guys.
So, uh, according to this, you want to work on the twenty sixth, twenty fifth and twenty sixth, right?
Right.
Okay. I mean, based on you wanting to take the twenty through the twenty first off. Starts on twenty first, I'm sorry. And, uh, I mean, I don't have a problem with this, I don't see a problem.
Well, the twenty first would be a Tuesday.
Right.
He should be able to do it.
That's.
But he has to be on call.
Okay.
He has to be on call, so if that phone rings, regardless of what he has going on.
Even being on, even being on call?
Yes, so that, that weekend that you get that overtime, that you come in and do the checks. So in other words, if someone calls in for a water main break or whatever, a septic backup, you have to be available to go to it, so.
Are you still on the call either, either way, if he gets called?
He's technically wanting vacation, the twenty first through the twenty fourth.
Correct.
And then resume, which would only be one day in pay period, right?
No.
Just that Friday?
No, cause he's gonna take that next week off also.
Yeah, more than likely I'm taking the following week off also.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, that's in between.
Oh.
He wants to work the weekend in between his vacation days.
It's like my wife's gonna be like three months without a paycheck, so I mean, any little bit of extra money is gonna help. I've already discussed it with her, she's fine, she knows the risks, if I do get eight calls in a. I've already discussed it with her, she's fine, she knows the risks if I do get eight calls in a weekend or if I get none.
But if she asks me about it, and I told her that's not my decision, that don't make me no difference, that's on you guys.
I don't have a problem with it. You guys want to vote on that, who wants to make a motion?
Um, it's not a, maybe you don't really have to.
Oh, really?
Where I work, it's 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 not a problem. If I would have put in, say for two weeks.
Basic question, though.
They could come back and deny these two, and that would force my, force me to.
Right. It's just, it was posed to me, but I wasn't gonna answer it just on me, so.
As far as I'm concerned, he could still work that weekend to avoid Walker having to work two weekends.
Unless you wanna take a vote to show whether everybody's in favor or not, that's on y'all.
Cause where I work at, if you're not working during the week, you're not gonna get overtime.
Well, I don't know, I would say it would be overtime pay.
It's automatically.
The one hour isn't automatically automatically double time. You get paid double time for one hour on the weekends, we're doing the checks.
And also call in on the weekends is also time that.
Not anymore, not since we done the personnel policy unless they're at forty hours, they don't get overtime.
It's not gonna be forty hours.
Paid for automatic two hours, it's not overtime unless you have forty hours already.
Forty working hours.
Yeah. Yeah, so since all his hours would be vacation hours, he would have no way of getting overtime pay. Just the what's agreed upon to pay him for the weekend checks. He wouldn't get, if he got called in, he wouldn't get paid overtime, he'd get paid regular time.
Yeah, and would that give me the, like my vacation hours back a little bit, if that happened? So say I get two call ins, that's four hours.
No, don't work that way.
Yeah, not comp time in that sense.
PTO isn't comp time, you use comp time to not use your PTO. Call ins, that's something different. Cause you get paid, you get an automatic two hours of pay because you got called in on your own time. So you can't justify taking two hours, using two hours of time you would actually work. You see what I'm saying?
Like on on the weekend, if if I did that on the weekend?
Yeah, if you got called in and got that automatic two hours pay, you can use that to deduct two hours from your. From your vacation day, vacation hours.
Okay.
Because that's.
But using my.
Courtesy that they give you for getting called in on the weekends.
Right.
They don't have to pay you an automatic two hours, they can make a clock in and clocked out and just pay you for what they're here for. Make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, and is everybody okay with him taking or working those two days?
Fine with me.
I'm not. Do what?
So we'll. Make a motion so that way we can have it on record what the vote is. Somebody?
I made a motion, go ahead and allow David to work that that weekend.
But. We're just gonna put three or two to one. As a vote. But and still, he gets to do it, cause.
But I just think that if you don't work during the week, then you shouldn't get the extra on that side of it, so.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to water. Um, are we moving on water?
Yes, fine.
Okay. Monthly testing done, backwash fourteen thousand gallons this month. Matt was stucky to go over wastewater paperwork and how to put it in the state correctly. Alarm system at the plant installed. Well one rehab was done and successful, a new pump was needed for well one. I called Shane for approval of a new pump.
So we do need to. Make a motion for that approval of that new new pump. What they were doing, they were rebuilding it, and the rebuild was. Six month warranty, I think it was. How long was the new pump warranty, David, do you know?
David?
What?
Do you know how long the new pump warranty is?
Um, for the well?
Yeah.
I seen it on the paper, I. I couldn't tell you.
It was, it was just a few hundred dollar, it was like five hundred dollars more for a new one than what it was to rebuild it, so. Walker had called Shane and approved just to go ahead and do the new one on that side of it.
So you just need unofficial votes, as like you're saying, so somebody makes a motion on the pump there.
Yeah. Do you have a motion on purchasing the pump?
I'll make that motion to purchase the new pump.
Second. There's seconds.
Paul in favor? Paul in favor, alright.
B and B went to Indy. And fixed all issues with placing the tiles, both trailers, dump truck and water trap had issues. Frontier is working on getting us our phone line back up, a whole stretch of it got fried. Power washed water tower lanes to keep up to date with standards, cleaned up eight loads of limbs at Lagoons. Wellhead protection plan update meeting done and alliances working with us to complete. Inspector for sulfate put on. Survey monkey for lead survey uploaded on town website. Um, three meters meter pits need fixed or dug up and replaced. Steves on Whitewater Road still needs a radio read. Three oh eight North US twenty seven needs dug up and brought to level and drive, and then we need to put concrete back. Four oh six Davis pit needs dug up and replaced. Looks like it's been ran over and it's collapsing, pictures on Silver Smith. Um, then it says discuss as a council, no backhoe, but these need done. Need solution on what we want to do. What's going on with the backhoe?
I have no clue, cause like I said, we talked about it, was it last month or the month before?
Both.
And uh the last I knew back at December, was it?
Yeah, it's been a while.
Needed a glass bowl and it's gonna be back up and running, and then. Three months later, and apparently it's still down and they have to rebuild a pump or something like that now.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think that's between Kyle and Shane as far as. More Kyle, I think, I don't think so much Shane, but I think Shane just get a little bit of it, so I honestly have no clue. Where it's at, what the situation is on it, but like I said, there is a few pits that do need to be dug up. And then like he, what he's talking about on here, so.
How the, how are we gonna do that without a backup?
Well, we could wind up renting them any excavator and then get the guys to get everything lined out to where if we rented it for a week. Then they could wind up getting all those projects done at once. On that side of it, so I mean, whether or not.
Okay.
We have them.
Maybe we need some prices.
Right, oh yeah, as far as renting on that side of it, but they need to get a list to us of everything that needs to be dug up and fixed on the meter pits. Um, septic tanks, all that stuff, they need to be done, a list and a timeframe as far as what it would take to do it, and then um. What the weekly rental would be to go ahead and get all this stuff taken care of. Maybe I'll talk to him about that for, to have all that stuff to us with a list for next month.
Okay. So. Moving on. Lead survey on town website, please try to do this for us at the end of May. Issues, lead inspection done on Silver Smith by Cobalt Silver wasn't even filled out. Had this been completed like it should, we wouldn't need the survey, just one of the many issues I deal with daily. And then I have, I guess it's the uh the well one rehab report from Ortman.
Yeah.
So this was, this is for, was for the new pump?
No, that's the new well that we voted on last month to have well, the new well done.
Yeah, the re, yeah, that's, that's the report on it, as far as words are.
Okay. Um, okay, so the well pump part that we were, we did voted on last month. Um, Ortman Drilling Inc. is pleased to provide you with this report on a recently completed well rehab work. On well one, during the testing earlier this year, the well produced a hundred and eighteen GPM at five PSI. At a sixty foot pumping water level, which was twenty five point five feet of drawdown. After the rehab and utilizing a new pump, it yielded a hundred and thirty nine GPM at eight PSI with fifty four feet pumping water level. With nineteen feet of drawdown. This is a small diameter well with only eight feet of screen, so the expected increase in yield wasn't going to be extreme. But at the rate you need to keep up with the high service pumps, it did improve. From approximately a hundred and ten GPM to a hundred and thirty nine GPM and at a pumping level that was also higher with less drawdown. The pump was also replaced at this time, which also showed improvement. Deadhead pressure earlier this year was at thirty PSI, it went to new pump and had increased to thirty two PSI. So there was apparently some wear which was lowering production. This work was done with the intent that this well should be able to satisfy the high service pumps without well three. Needing to pick up the slack, operating for a week or two will tell us if the objective was met. However, given the age and limited production capacity of this well, I think it would still be prudent for the town to work towards identifying a location. For a replacement, this is not an immediate need, but something that should be planned and budgeted. Uh respectfully, Bill, the note, Ortman Drilling Water Services.
Very good. Anything else along that line of reports?
I did meet with Rob, is it Rob Jeffers, I think it is, out there at the. I think it's Rob, isn't it, I got his card in the truck. That was on the solar out there at the lagoons about taking it, making it go green. Um, I met with him and um went over basically. Doing away with the electric that's ran out there, and then it would just turn all solar out there with the green, with the battery backups, so it'll have a solar. That'll run off during the day, then they'll have battery backups as far as for the pumps. Um, met with him last Friday, I think it was, so yeah, it was Friday I met with him. And he's working on that, um as far as, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have some ideas and some numbers on what it is that we could do out there.
Good stuff. Uh, anything from the fire department?
Just wanna follow up with the, the parking deal, see where we were at with that from last month.
Waiting on the attorney as far as on that side of it.
She said if we want her to draw up a new parking ordinance, I just need to give her the format of. Which I'm assuming she didn't get the code book from Aubrey, cause there's a format in the code book of how the ordinance are supposed, ordinances are supposed to be. But, so.
How can we get that to her from her?
I can't, I mean. She should have some ordinances, like on the flash drive that Aubrey gave her, so.
Yeah.
I just tell her that they're staying the same format of all the other ones. But I have some traffic ordinances in there that I can easily scan and email to her.
Right.
From where we've done no parking before in other places. They fall under the same ordinances, just different sections that you amend. That make sense? But, and then it'll have to be on the agenda, so, and somehow make sure public knows, so. The people that live back there can.
Always be notified.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought she was already working on that in last month.
Well, I asked her if she had done anything with it, and that was the answer. That I got today.
Yeah.
Or this evening, I guess I should say, was that if she needs, if I, we need her to do one, then she just needs to know the format.
Well, I think the fire department's wanted it done, so.
We need it done.
Yeah, well, she didn't answer me till today, so.
Wasn't quite that hard.
You communicate with her more than any of us.
Oh, yeah, I know, let's not, gonna start on that, anyway, next subject.
Okay, moving on, visitors' club, is there anybody has anything they wanna talk about? Just step up voting, please.
Oh, yeah.
Several things, really.
I don't get a chance, I've been up here almost twenty five years, so I don't really get a chance with the hours I've worked to get here, but. I'm glad I able to watch online. Uh, I watched the parking, which I haven't had a chance to talk with anybody yet. The venture down here with my sons, we moved the driveway, played it insured. So we got that cleared, but there's parking on one side, and when we first moved up here, there was parking on both sides.
Yeah.
I think because of width of the street, but if you look at Green, Amal Century, and a lot of the other ones, the same thing, so. I'm proposing parking on one side, let the fire trucks up through. I mean, we're doing it down there.
Yeah, and that's the way it is all the way up and down Green Street already.
I mean, even, even Main, even Main Street's bad. Uh, excuse me, I'm tired, but uh. Main Street's bad, I work Saturdays and Sundays up here in town, most of you probably see me hopping from house to house and side jobs, but. Uh, the stop sign down here, maybe, I talked to young officer Saturday, first time I seen something on the weekend. That stop sign down here is about fifty percent people stopping at all, that's the type that's rolling through and going.
Yep.
Uh, daycare over here, nobody informed us the traffic has gotten worse over the last couple of years. I mean, it's completely bottled up from Maine all the way down.
Yep.
So.
You're using nice words.
No, I I'm tired, so I'm trying to remember everything I got, but. I like to talk to people before I get to this, but I haven't had a chance to, I know, I think everybody here I've talked to at least once, maybe, maybe some of you not, but. Uh, the parking down there, we're at capacity now, I'm trying to get my son, trying to buy another house, you know.
Right.
So that'll free me up the vehicle space, but we got neighbors to the north and south, and. Besides going in the yards or someplace to go, and I'm sure everybody else is gonna have the same issue, I mean, even over here, uh. Just north of the basketball courts, there's several vehicles over there, even a trailer, I noticed with no plates on it.
Yeah.
So I don't know who that belongs to.
Right.
So. You know, if that's public parking there, you know, I'm gonna walk down the street, but if it's not, then I need to know.
I'm not really for sure.
What we're gonna do.
I looked on GIS and it shows, it shows the town owns it.
So.
GIS.
Yeah, somebody.
Yeah, well, from the backside.
Yeah, I mean, there's jeeps and a trailer sitting down there, so, I mean, we won't care play.
I think somebody probably told him to take the signs down that they had all around as far as.
I think somebody took them down, but.
They're not.
But who owns the basketball court?
Stay off the property.
Uh, the town.
That's the one that, that's the ones that I was going to say something about them putting them up there, but.
But I see a lot of uh high school kids, they're parking over here in the log and walking around because they can't park there.
Yeah.
To play basketball, and there's a lot of kids that come back, some at drive, so I understand it. But anyways, going back to Saturday, talk to officer about this intersection. I move two or three yards here on twenty seven, the car's coming in from the north. On the weekends, it's a free for all.
Tornado warning.
That's right. I have cars uh coming from the north, and they come around the curve, they're in the southbound or northbound lane, so. Going fast and they're not slowing down, so.
Right.
I'm watching while I'm out there, but uh, and I think that was it, and then Main Street as well. I think parking on that needs to be either moved to the uh north side or south side and freed up, because. They're semis and farm equipment, and even when I'm coming home, if I come down that way, you're seeing cars dodging and out or waiting at the intersections for another car.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw it out there, I understand what he was saying last month about being too close to the curves. And I went out there and, yeah, it's obvious, it's not marked, but I know better, I've been in the safety industry about thirty years.
Right, yeah.
You know, I do know that, so as soon as they get that situated, but.
And I don't want you to feel like I was picking on you.
No, 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 no. No, 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 I, 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 no, I get it, and I don't wanna open up a mess where you have a thousand people coming down here. Complaining about parking, but. We have the same, like I said, with both sides now, it's one side and there's other streets, it's just impossible with one vehicle. Unless you make them one way, and I could see that. If you wanted to do that, and that way you can still park on both sides. But that would be up.
Well, I don't think you could park on both sides, you know, as far as Mill Street handle, so fine, there's no way. That you can have parking on both sides.
But even after you go down, even some of these streets over here, right, they're the same way.
Oh, I know, yeah, they are, yeah, it's just one, one lane going down through. And they are on both sides, cause those are a little bit wider. They're a little bit, not much, but they are.
Not for two vehicles, that, that's not gonna happen, but. I think that would be it for me tonight, but. I keep in contact with you and Wes on that, but I'm just concerned about the, you know, traffic on twenty seven, it's a free for all on the weekends. There's no, nothing out there. And then parking. And then vehicles over here as far as if we can park over there or not.
Like I said, I mean, I looked on GIS, but I'll clarify who actually owns it.
It's the town.
So is it public parking then?
So from the, from the fence, from the backside of the basketball court to the road.
The gravel area.
I probably won't come down there.
That's the schools.
Right, right, they do have signs.
Yep, it's split right down the middle of that basketball court. All the gravel is the town, yes, and the paved is the school.
Don't ask me why.
That, the other half of the basketball court and the paved asphalt. Is the town also, I take that, I apologize.
Yeah, that's what I looked at when I looked at.
So, yeah.
I argued with them a few times about that, yeah.
The school uses that, doesn't it?
Not to mention the traffic in the mornings and afternoons, and then sometimes if there's people running late with their kids, it's a speedway down through there.
Cause when that first started, they would leave their toys. And I had to go over and tell them that you're gonna have to start taking.
I gave you a month, but. Like you said, I'll try to get back there, but.
Yeah, like I said, it's gonna be an ongoing discussion, especially with attorney drawing it up, we gotta get notification.
Putting actually parking spaces, paint them on the streets, would that help?
I can't.
Yeah, I, I know sometimes, depends on where you're at.
If you go into Richmond and you pull in one of those spots, you see somebody parked right in the middle. As far as on that side of it, so I don't, I honestly don't think that that would make any difference. Ultimately, the street got easy to go around, start getting the street curves painted, you know, that hasn't been done in three years.
Even some of the curves probably need attention too.
Right, yep.
I think that's about it, I know we did a lot of oddball trailers, goosenecks and some other trailers. And why they're down in the town maneuvering the streets, I have no idea.
I'm not sure either, so.
Okay, I think I'm done for now, I'll get with you guys on the side before that and see what's going on.
Sounds good. He going back to the chair, it feels good.
Anybody else got anything to say?
Go ahead.
Harry, Kevin, with my deal that we've been talking about for two years. Any changes, any? You know, about the trucks and the trailers?
I mean, I, I have nothing, I mean, short of, I know Shane, Shane's the one that's been working on that, on that side of it. I would just sit there and say that. Some of the vehicles can't go through there, but then there again, if you say no semis on there. As far as, you know, with the limited number of officers that we have, to be able to enforce it on that also. So, we can take pictures all day long, you know, on that side of it, but I mean, it's definitely something to. Cause I know Aubrey had worked on it also a little bit, so I mean, that's something that, you know, we can pass off to the new attorney also to see what she has. Cause she works with other towns.
Municipalities.
You know, so she may have something in her.
Just frustrating.
Cause wasn't Kyle gonna get, look, look into getting signs? I know he said he's, I know at one point he said that he had, thought he had to get it cleared to the state, but that's not a state.
It's not, is it?
It's not a state.
We, we did vote on it.
No, we haven't voted.
He says something, I'll get the guardrails, he had to go through the state or something on that, I got a question, uh, I take care of her yard as well. Uh, on that curb there, how much leeway would you have if I put in like concrete post?
Well, so if somebody hits it and you put that in there, you're liable.
Even if they come onto the property?
Because there's actually an easement all the way around there on that side of it.
What is the town easement on the road?
Six feet?
Six feet from the edge of the road.
You know, so if you, if you turn around just like a week, if you was to put a guardrail right there and somebody come around there. And they flip over and land on somebody, well.
They come back on, okay, I see.
Yeah, it, it's a liability on that side of it, you know, just like on. Uh, I know friends of ours, they were wanting to put, they're at a dead end road where it keys, well, there's many people that had drove right through it, well, they were wanting to put. The same thing there to stop them, cause I mean, they're almost hitting their house. And they were told that they can't do that because if they do that and they wanna kill somebody, it'll be their fault.
Is it, is it Pepsi or is it all of them?
I talked to Coke uh, over a year ago and not once since then has a Coke truck been by, I talked to the driver.
Yeah, Pepsi's the only one that I've been seeing still doing it.
Yeah, Pepsi always.
I was there last year, there was a gooseneck trailer, I don't know if it was a farm truck or not, but it was a gooseneck trailer and any other one is a. Unmarked truck with mowers on it. And they both were up on the rocks.
There to say, you know, if you pass an orange, no semi, well, those aren't semis.
In fact, farm trucks are more prevalent than semis. Because uh, one of them went the other day and it had to have been at least twenty feet long. And uh, you know. Why don't they think? They see that square corner, why don't they think?
I, I don't know.
And it just uh, you know, and they, they drive up over those rocks and scrape them all off and I thought, and you'll probably do it again next week. Just, you know, frustrating.
She usually used it in the mud building for a parking space anyway. On top of my septic tank. So when that thing falls in. That's probably where it's at.
Just a privileged society. Everybody thinks they can just do whatever they wanna do.
I know, well, I think we need to talk to Mark about getting, trying to figure out what to do about that, if we can put signed up.
Oh, and I still have a twenty mile speed limit sign that uh. That the people who put in the new water thing is still in in my yard that they took up and it's still in in my yard.
Say something to the city department about getting that picked up?
Yeah, it's twenty, it's twenty mile speed limit. I don't know that that makes any difference, but it's still in my yard.
You got speeding problems on that curb right there?
Well, I tell you.
I, I work down there every week, I see a lot.
Yeah, well, I'll pass the message along to Kyle to swing by there.
I think I, I think I told him about it the last time he was there. They did get my yard kind of fixed, you know, where they dug out, um, grass isn't growing good, but he said he'd put some more on it. But uh, yeah, I've seen him have, have to back up both ways. So it's uh, it's kinda.
Narrow street. It's just another narrow street.
I know, I think it used to be an alley. It was.
Same way it was verbal. My property line goes out in the middle of it.
Okay then. Moving on, can we get approval, claims and payments?
I make a motion to pay all claims.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I make a motion we burn.
I'll second that.
Aye.
All in favor?
Everybody have a good night.